Now 9:46 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of December 12th, 2023 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priorities. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to add a resolution on terrorism and antisemitism awareness in schools.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? There are motions by Ms. Snyder, second by Ms. Lipton. Any discussion? Ms. Snyder, discussion?
I would like to read it in the record. I am going to forego the first 11 statements which were adopted from a resolution that was passed in the U.S. Senate and introduced by Senator Schumer. Therefore, be it resolved as a combination of statements by a, from a resolution that was introduced by Senator Rubio and statements that would help Michigan schools move forward. I will read that. Therefore, be it resolved, the Michigan State Board of Education recommends that schools in Michigan honor the innocent victims of the tragedy of terrorism by adopting the sentiment in the following statements presented in a separate resolution on October 18th, 2023, in the spirit of bipartisanship. One, we stand with Israel and against all acts of antisemitism, terrorism, and the sponsorship and/or promotion of said terrorism. Two, affirm there is no equivalence between the terrorism of Hamas and its backers on one hand, and the military action taken by Israel in self-defense on the other. Three, we condemn any teaching in Michigan public schools that presents or portrays Israel and Hamas as equals. Four, condemn any and all taking of innocent lives during conflict. Five, reject antisemitism in all forms and guises, full-throated Jew hatred to the subtle antisemitism that holds the state of Israel to a different standard than any other nation. And six, commits to honoring the sexually assaulted, kidnapped, as well as the memory of those deceased, and never forgetting the unwarranted and unjustified assault on Israel and the Jewish people on October 7th, 2023.
We have a motion, we have a second. It's been read partially into the record. Any other discussion? This is a motion solely about placing the item on the agenda, not the merits of the motion. Dr. Pugh, and then Mr. Bullock.
I thank Board Member Snyder for bringing this forward, and definitely will support putting this on the agenda for discussion, and just wanting to speak to the fact that we definitely should condemn antisemitism and want to make some amendments so that we're also making sure that others who are involved in this war, that we're also speaking to Islamophobia as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. Bullock?
I think I get the intent of the resolution. I just, it's very politically charged, and it actually puts us in a precarious situation as a school board. We should be protecting all students, all the staff, all the teachers. There are other things that are going on, and I don't want us to be put in the crossroads of where we appear to be, whether we are or not, in intentions of adopting one thing, and it makes us look like we're against something else. We need to be vigilant with LGBTQ. We need to be vigilant with all forms of hatred, racism. And so, while I get it, at this time, I'm not comfortable putting it on the agenda, so.
Okay, very good. So we've got a motion, a second. Thank you very much, Mr. Bullock. Ms. McMillan?
I don't think this topic is within this body's purview, and I'll be abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Any other people to share in the discussion about whether to put it on the agenda or not? Ms. Snyder?
I would just say I would appreciate any support we have to get it on the agenda, simply because historically speaking, in war and oppression, schools and the concept of education has been one of the most important voices that can speak up in a way that thwarts further war and oppression.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Anyone else to speak on placement of this on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote. Ms. Evans?
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Abstain.
Motion fails.
Okay, thanks very much, board. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Dr. Pritchett moves the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bullock. Any discussion about the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. If we could please have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
No. I mean, yes, yes, yes. I definitely approve.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, Ms. Liz Evans, State Board Executive, will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, Chairperson of the State Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table, we have Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB Delegate Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakhamas, Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter, and Ms. Candace Jackson, the Michigan Teacher of the Year from Detroit Public Schools Community District. Seated behind them is Board Co-Vice President Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield. Back to the table to my right are Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, Board Treasurer Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, and Board Secretary Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Virtually, we have joining us today Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor, ex officio.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register by 1:00 p.m. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/mde. To provide public comment in person, please complete a green public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage, again, at www.michigan.gov/mde. First item on today's agenda for the committee as a whole is a presentation on the Michigan Department of Education Student Advisory Council's Safe Spaces in School resource. During this presentation, members of the MDE Student Advisory Council will share an overview of the resource document developed by council members to support and encourage the creation or continuation of safe spaces in schools to talk about issues of race and racism. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Renee Garcia, Director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Alexandra, an MDE SAC member, Ari, Charis, David, Hibba, and Olivia, MDE SAC members all, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, on this Tuesday, December 12th, in front of the State Board meeting. Accompanying the students today are some of the parents and district staff from their schools. Parents and staff members, please raise your hands so that we can welcome you. Thank you very much for being here and for supporting your young people. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. There may be a test. But if that test is administered, it will be by the kids of adults. Students, welcome.
Good morning, Dr. Rice. Good morning, Board. Thank you. We are, I am so proud and excited to sit at this table with these six members of the Student Advisory Council. There are many more. They would not fit all around this table. But I get the privilege of supporting, along with a couple other MDE team members, the facilitation of this group. So with that, I'm going to just turn it right over to David. Take us away.
Thank you, Dr. Rice and Dr. Garcia for that introduction. Thank you, Board of Education, for inviting us to provide this presentation today. We are very grateful to have the opportunity. Oh, louder? Okay, okay. Should I restart?
No, you're good.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rice and Dr. Garcia, for the introduction. Thank you, Board of Education, for inviting us to provide this presentation today. We are very grateful to have the opportunity to present to you all, and we're excited to move forward with this important topic. To start, we would like to introduce ourselves as the Michigan Department of Education Student Advisory Council. My name is David, and I am a junior. I plan to study biomedical engineering in another state, preferably North Carolina.
Hello, my name is Olivia, and I'm a sophomore. My favorite subject is biology, and I'd like to go into pre-med.
Hello, my name is Alexandra. I'm a senior in high school. And for the document you'll see today, I was on the writers, editors, and fact-finders teams.
Hello, my name is Hibba. I am a senior. And for the document you'll see today, I was the co-leader of the editors' team and a member of the graphics team. I would like to study biology.
Hi, I'm Charis. I'm a senior in high school, and after I graduate, I plan on studying outdoor recreation.
Hi, my name is Ari. I'm a junior, and I'd like to go into sociology. On June 5th, 2020, Michigan State Superintendent Dr. Rice sent out a letter to local school district superintendents, public school academy directors, reflecting on the brutal murder of George Floyd and other African-American men. He stressed the importance of creating a better world and that diversity creates richness in our society. With all this said, he made an important request, which is responsible for our presence here in front of you all. He made a request, oh, I'm sorry. His request being, and I quote, "I'm asking for your help in connecting me with educators and students to bring individual and collective experiences and wisdom to this conversation. I'm looking for a representative group that reflects the diversity in this state, diversity of race, geography, ethnicity, culture, disability, and native language, among other characteristics," end quote. The students before you now are just a few recommended by superintendents and directors who are part of a group known as the MDE Student Advisory Council. The MDE Student Advisory Council started as a group composed of middle school and high school students. For three years, we, the students and the Michigan Department of Education, have met virtually to discuss ways that we want to see change in our schools concerning the creation of safe spaces. We also are able to share our thoughts, experiences, and feelings with Dr. Rice. We are always free to ask questions, and when necessary, there are follow-up presentations to help us better understand how the department works with our school districts. When we began meeting as a council, we talked about our priorities, and when we chose how to create safe spaces in schools to be our project, because as a group, we felt when topics surrounding race or racism would emerge in the classroom, it would be brushed over, brushed, and uncomfortable. We decided to create this resource as a guide for students to create safe spaces and open spaces for students to share their thoughts and experiences free of judgment. This opens up opportunities for students to learn and grow by engaging in meaningful dialogue. One of the first things we did as a council was go on a listening tour with teachers and students from different areas across Michigan who have implemented safe spaces in their schools to learn how they defined the safe spaces, set up the spaces, and what was working for them. Now to Hibba, who are explaining what a safe space is.
Thank you, Ari. A safe space is any environment where people can be themselves and feel supported, comfortable, believed, and understood without the fear of judgment, exclusion, bias, or hurt. They are meant to support people, especially those who are struggling, by providing a reliable and trustworthy environment where people know they could be heard. There are two types of safe spaces. A supportive safe space allows students to relax and decompress as their genuine self, allows students to connect and freely discuss with others, and uplift students in times of need. An active safe space allows students to work together for positive change in their broader communities by creating and fulfilling goals focused on a specific topic or need. Now to Alexandra.
Thank you, Hibba. Knowing what defines a safe space helps us to understand why they're important. Safe spaces are important because they provide mental and social support, especially for students who are marginalized. Statistics show that many teens struggle with mental health, and critical issues such as racism, sexism, and homophobia can exacerbate these difficulties. Centering safe spaces around affinity groups of people with shared identities, interests, or ideologies can help them thrive by offering them the extra support they may need. Connecting with peers helps people feel more welcomed and connected to their community, fostering a sense of belonging that in turn helps their social and mental health. It fosters individual growth, friendships, and community involvement. Providing students with the opportunity to express themselves helps them better understand both themselves and others, and can help them navigate difficult life situations that arise as a young person. It also teaches students how to have difficult conversations with real practice, which is a key skill they can use long into life. Safe spaces are important at school because students may not have the same level of support or acknowledgement anywhere else. Outside support can be scarce for students, which can make them feel alone or unimportant. These safe spaces at school will provide that support where other areas of their life may be lacking. Having a safe space in an educational setting also reassures students that they belong at school, which can encourage and inspire them to do their best in classes and on assignments. Feeling welcomed and safe at school eliminates a barrier to success that many students experience, and they can achieve a stronger academic performance with this support. Everyone here has their own story about how a safe space has benefited them that we would like to share with you. Olivia, take it away.
Thanks, Alexandra. A safe space saved my mental health. As a child, I grew up around African-American culture in Georgia. Once I moved to Michigan in fourth grade, I felt like I'd lost the connection with my culture that made me feel safe and welcomed. Most people in my classes didn't look like me, and it was rare to see people in successful positions who I could identify with. Therefore, throughout middle school, I was uncomfortable when it came to expressing myself. I started to hide my curly hair by putting it in a tight bun, and I forced myself to stop speaking in a southern accent. However, in high school, I found an organization called the Black Student Union, or BSU. In BSU, I was able to reconnect with my culture that I yearned to be a part of for years. We were able to speak about racial issues that concerned us, and I now feel much more comfortable expressing myself and being more open. My mental health has improved so much since I joined BSU, and I finally feel like I'm able to express the true me.
Thank you, Olivia. I also was able to express the true me because at my school, there's a teacher who opens her classroom to anyone that needs to talk or needs a helping hand. I have a meaningful relationship with her that is built on trusting each other and being vulnerable to each other about difficult topics that need to be talked about. Even though I don't have this teacher currently, I go out of my way each day to see her because I still feel comfortable going and talking to her to have these tough conversations. This teacher is newer to me, and I wish I had this space earlier in my schooling to talk about bullying or any situation I needed extra support or a place to talk. She is someone I like to have on my side at school, and she understands me. This space has helped me get the urge to go to school and not just skip class because I know my teacher will be there and give me the listening ear and the support I need each day.
Having a safe space to discuss racism could have helped me as a fifth grader. In history class, we had a long unit on slavery. It might have felt longer than it actually was because of the feeling of discomfort that I felt being one of the only minority students in the classroom. It felt like other students were turning around to look at me to see how I was doing. During lessons, the students were naturally silent, and the teacher was the only one talking, and we never addressed that discomfort. We would talk about a feeling sadness and even guilt about slavery outside of class, but we didn't have those discussions within the classroom setting where we could have pressed into our discomfort and could have had the opportunity to learn and grow. Each of our stories represent true examples of how safe spaces can be beneficial, and every student in Michigan deserves to have these spaces.
The examples mentioned previously are why we decided to create a guidance document. Prior to beginning the writing of the document, the council used information from listening tours to identify key points and outline the components of safe spaces in the guidance document. In October 2022, we divided into four teams to begin the rough draft of the document. These groups functioned during the school year, and their student team leaders coordinated the meetings and agenda topics in order to meet deadlines. The group meetings could vary from once every few days to once every few weeks. The fact-finders were responsible for identifying proper information and searching for helpful resources. They focused on finding credible sources and using personal experiences from people who have knowledge on safe spaces. They could carefully choose the best resources to enhance the information in the document. The writers brainstormed and created rough drafts. The team met as a group once a week for one to two hours and divided the work amongst one another. Then they met to review and confirm their work as a team. The editors revised the rough drafts of the document. They focused on its clarity and finalization. The graphics team were responsible for creating illustrations and searching for images to incorporate throughout the document. They focused on reflecting the information provided in the chapter through graphics. A group of students continued working into the summer to finalize the document.
The entirety of this document was a collaborative effort between all four teams, where we relied on the assistance of each other. As an example, the writing or editing team placed comments in the document where they liked a statistic or helpful resource. The fact-finding team then used these comments to find a credible source that could enhance the information already in the document. Once they found the sources, the writing and editing teams figured out how they'd like to express the source or statistic. Some of the statistics called for the assistance of the graphic team, and they'd make stunning graphics and provide helpful pictures to further emphasize it. Additionally, multiple members from different teams would attend meetings in the final stages of drafting the document with a professional editor. We built off of each other's ideas during these meetings and developed the document further. These were just a few examples, but the teams collaborated very often. I was the co-leader of the fact-finding team, and I found the experience to be very fulfilling. I enjoyed meeting with the teams and seeing the document progressing right before my eyes.
As for the document itself, there is an introduction followed by seven chapters that highlight important aspects of safe spaces, and it ends with a conclusion. Each chapter defines a what, why, and how of the chapter's topic and ends with guiding questions that help facilitate the creation of a safe space. Finally, it's important to note that although the document was originally created to talk about racism, we realized that the contents of the document were applicable to any social, personal, or mental health struggles students may face, and the information discussed can be used for a variety of topics beyond just racism. The introduction defines what a safe space is and explains why they're important. It outlines two different types of safe spaces, active and supportive. It provides examples of group initiatives and organizes the contents for the resource to follow. Chapter one is called Establish the Purpose and Determine Who Participates. These two factors help shape the foundation of the safe space so it can move forward to promote positive change and help people understand social matters and appreciate diversity. It can also help students struggling with personal, social, or mental health issues by providing meaningful connection. Chapter two is called Prioritize and Establish Authentic Relationships. Building relationships between safe space participants as well as adult advisors helps students to improve their social and emotional well-being and builds trust and comfort. A Michigan high school student expressed how having such a relationship has been beneficial for them. They said, "Knowing I can be around someone or people who I don't know judge me, who I know won't judge me just for being me, helps me realize it's okay to show my emotions and just be myself." This quote is also featured in the chapter.
Chapter three, titled Create and Use Safe Space Agreements, states that everyone should work together to create the safe space agreement. This is a guide for resolving issues. Students are more likely to follow agreements if they help build and trust them, and issues are less likely to arise when students are working together and creating the space. If members work together to build the agreement, it gives members a chance to connect and set important boundaries with each other. Working together builds respect and trust with each other and holds the safe space environment accountable and makes everyone feel comfortable using the space. The purpose is to maintain a supportive environment for all to use. Chapter four, titled Provide Opportunities for Dialogue, encourages discussions with students that may include topics that are new to them, foster meaningful conversations, and make students more comfortable in addressing these new topics. This gives students the main voice of this process. This process should not force conversation, but instead keep the conversation open and flow between students and encourage other students to get involved in the conversation. Chapter five, titled Determine Logistics of Meetings, states that determining the logistics of a meeting, setting agendas, schedules, and consistent meeting times strengthens the meeting and space over time. Plan times that all students can meet and thoroughly determine and communicate the logistics of the meeting ensures a liability and effectiveness of this space. Each school has a unique student body with different needs that need to be addressed to ensure the student body is safe. This space should be one that every student has access to and feels comfortable and welcome to use.
Chapter six, titled Establish Rules, explains the importance of student and adult leadership in safe spaces. Adult leaders are vital to safe spaces because they can help organize the members and leaders and can also help guide a group through difficult conversations. Student leaders are also essential to safe spaces. Establishing dedicated student leaders will make the space more efficient and organized by distributing tasks and responsibilities. Also, direct input from students can determine relevant topics of discussion, and student leadership can encourage the building of strong relationships and open dialogue.
Chapter seven, titled Celebrate Success, focuses on the significance of celebrating accomplishments within a safe space. It encourages students to establish goals and milestones which can motivate and provide a way for them to track their progress. The quote you see here from a Michigan high school student appears in chapter seven and reads, "By focusing on the ways the safe space was making a positive impact on our school, we felt pride in our accomplishments and inspiration to continue to reach our goals." Through the encouragement, students are more likely to achieve their goals and to see the value in their efforts. Finally, the conclusion concludes a call to action that encourages staff and students to take the steps necessary to create safe spaces that will make schools a better place for everyone. It ends with a powerful line, "Change starts with you." We hope schools will go forward and use this document to create positive change in their community. When discussing the topic positive change, we're hoping that consulting this resource will make schools more positive, welcoming, and supportive concerning its students. Like Olivia, my safe space is a club at my school called BSU, or the Black Student Union. In this group, African-Americans from three different schools in my district come together. We have game days, chill days, or heavy days in which we talk about heavy or difficult topics that will usually not be discussed, especially in a school setting. You don't even have to know anybody to feel comfortable sharing your thoughts or feelings. Everyone is so thoughtful and respectful of each other that we feel almost like a family. We even have an event coming up in which we show our black culture through dance, step, and fashion to our whole school.
Students at my school initiate a club that meets once a week during lunch. The members gather in a classroom under the supervision of a teacher to discuss topics of interest, current events, life experiences, or even talking about how their day went. This safe space in my school is highly favored by students based on their participation and reviews. One student in this club told me, "Having a group of individuals that are open to speaking about sensitive topics is a great privilege," end quote. Personally, when I'm in the space, I feel relaxed during our discussions. My classmates and I use this supportive space to comfortably talk about a variety of topics. In the beginning of this club, many of us began as strangers, but as time went on, we became friends.
For me, there's a teacher at my school that everyone looks forward to seeing. I was in his class two years ago, but his room has always stuck out to me as a safe space for me and my friends. We meet in his room before and after school every day to chat, decompress, and just slow down for a little bit before carrying on with our busy lives. This safe space has helped me a lot because it's shown me that teachers really do care about their students as people and are able to offer support, even if it's in the form of a relaxed environment where we can sit around and talk as friends without our school filters on. His room has been a massive help to me and my friends as we are able to be ourselves and talk while still being in the classroom.
Our personal stories are evidence of how impactful and important safe spaces can be. The Safe Space document will be publicly released later this week, and we are excited to see how much change, positive change, will be made in the lives of students across Michigan. Thank you for your time. We are ready to hear your thoughts and answer your questions.
People, we appreciate you. Mr. Bullock?
First, let me just say, I'm enthusiastic about you guys. You guys have, I applaud you. You guys are having a grown-up, mature discussion that requires honesty and courage that even adults can't have many times. And this is truly a picture of diversity, the way I see diverse rooms and groups and organizations. I had started writing down questions, but you guys were so thorough that my first three questions you answered in your presentation, first about personal experiences. Then I was going to talk about, as you have conversations about racism, did that lead to other conversations? You talked about personal, social. Did you learn the discernment between bigotry and discrimination and all these other things? I hope that happened. Somebody talked about bullying and labeling and those things that go on. These are things that, again, adults don't even have great conversation about. So, when you're having these conversations, you have to do some self-reflecting. And so my question is about, did, have any of you recognized that self in reflecting about where you started at when you joined the group? Or even prior, probably prior to that, you said, once you got to high school and got around folks, have you recognized your own inner growth? And are you comfortable expounding upon it?
Yeah, I would start with that. I definitely have felt over the years, especially when I've connected more with people in my culture and stuff. Before that, I was very uncomfortable with my identity and...
Before that, I was very uncomfortable with my identity, and I didn't know really where I belonged because I'm also mixed. So I didn't really know which group I belonged to. But the more I, you know, got into my safe space and started interacting with people that are in, like, my culture and my identity, I started to realize that I can just be me and that's okay.
I also have an experience. So, when I actually began to, like, read this document and go over it more, it showed me the importance of a safe space more so. So then I, that's when I ended up joining BSU. And then that's how I got my personal experience with BSU and becoming a part of it and me truly seeing how important having that outlet in the safe space was.
Maybe I missed, but my last piece is just, I wanted to know, like, where everybody was from. Like, where, I don't, like, I don't need to know, like, exactly what's-
You want to go region? Like, part of the state?
Like, you can just, like, you know, I'm from Escanaba, or, you know, I don't-
Yeah, you'll notice when you do see the document that they're, um, they've identified how they want to be represented, but we've worked really hard to, um, protect their privacy because, you know, yeah. Yeah, so maybe, um, east side, west side, middle?
Yeah, southeast Michigan, northern Michigan, or-
I'm mid-Michigan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm southeast Michigan.
West Michigan.
West Michigan.
East.
Or southeast as well.
That's all. Yeah, I, listen, I come from a place where, yeah, privacy, especially youth privacy is the utmost. So, uh, I'm done. I'm just excited about them and this, this group.
Thank you for lifting them up, Mr. Bullock. Other board members? Ms. Lipton?
We need to do some training of adults.
First, I just wanted to also echo Board Member Bullock's, um, praise and to thank you all for, for being here and for taking the time to, um, put together the document. My question is, um, what would be your message for, first, a, a young person that would want to see, uh, such a program occur in their school? What would be some advice you might give to them? And then, secondly, uh, in thinking about how a young person or a young group of people could start something at their school, um, could you give any advice on what kind of obstacles they might face from the grown-ups in the room, I guess?
I can start. I think, um, one piece of advice I would probably give to a young person trying to start a safe space like this is to not give up because it's, it's a difficult task to, um, take on. And so, um, like, seek help. Like, adults, um, have to be there to be, like, advisors and to help you start facilitating things. So lean on other people for support and, and don't give up in the face of adversity.
I could add, oh, I could add on to that. I would say take initiative. I know some people might wait for others to start something. I would say maybe take initiative for yourself. And if there's any obstacles, I would say, because there's a process of starting a club at my school, and so maybe asking if there's someone in charge of those clubs. And because this safe space, as I was saying in my personal statement, um, they're, they are considered a club, especially when meeting in school. And so I would ask someone who could be in charge of organizing those clubs and work with them to initiate it.
One thing I would share is, um, as a piece of advice would be to not lose sight of, like, the big picture. It's meant to help students and staff feel more comfortable in, like, an educational environment. And I feel like if you have that goal in mind, then it'll make a lot of things easier.
Would you all like to see safe spaces in every school?
Absolutely.
And it would look different from school to school.
Yeah.
We, we shared a lot in our document how in every school, safe spaces will be different. Some schools will have a very small minority population. Uh, some schools will have a bigger LGBTQ population. So different schools need different things, and not every safe space is going to look exactly the same. So what we talked about a lot in the documents is when making our safe space, we should identify certain things that our safe space should include, um, and that we want to see in our, like, unique safe space.
I also want to stress that safe spaces are not only about the discussions that occur within them, it's also about relationships and meeting new people. People who might not be like you or people who are similar to you. So it's about, um, inclusion, diversity, and relationships.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. McMillan?
I guess I'm, I'd like to hear from the students about how they work through who should have access to the safe spaces. And so what if there's a student who believes that if someone is born a boy, they can't become a girl? And they're harassed and bullied because of their view? Should that student be allowed to have access and utilize a safe space?
Yes, I would say yes. Um, there's a part of the resource where we talk about, um, oops and ouch, where basically when you're speaking and you're sharing how you feel, because we want it to be a space for your judgment for everyone. And if somebody shares something that you find offensive, you could say, ouch, and the person would be, oops, this is how I feel, you know, and kind of like grow from there. There's going to be very uncomfortable, like, con, um, conversations that are going to be had, but the reason is to grow and to learn from that.
Exactly. And on that, it's not built to be an echo chamber, so it's not built to just be a group of like-minded students all, like, believing one thing or thinking one thing. Part of the purpose of a safe space is to be able to have that diversity and to be able to build empathy between students and to be able to have that connection and that communication that, like, stops, like, the polarization and the not talking between two different, um, like, beliefs. It's about, like, being able to see other people's perspectives and understand and empathize with other people.
Everyone has, like, different life stories, different experiences, and so it's an opportunity to share with them.
I'd also like to add that in safe spaces, we are bound to have these kind of conversations. And a purpose, another purpose of a safe space is to educate, and it is really, really important in safe spaces to have people of different, like, views and beliefs so that we can all learn to develop our own, you know, idea of what is right and educate each other.
I love them now.
You, you can imagine what I feel about them, too. Uh, Mr. McMillan, other questions?
No, other than, are the safe spaces, uh, is there an adult in the, in the room? And are they driving or maybe even subtly? I mean, how do they, how do you make sure that they're not, their views aren't being, aren't driving the conversations or the-
Yeah, so in document six, we talk about, um, adult leadership and student leadership. And we really, just like this council we have here, we have, you know, adult advisors and stuff, but we really emphasize, um, the importance of student leadership in, um, our safe spaces. And so the adults will kind of help lead the conversation, and they might help, um, organize things like meetings and stuff. But we really want everything to come from the students, and so student leaders can help identify topics of conversation to talk about and, you know, lead that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Uh, Dr. Pritchett?
First of all, thank you. You are truly leaders, uh, and not only at your schools, but, um, I, um, as individuals. I assume we will get copies of this wonderful document, uh, whenever it's available. Uh, and I, too, would like to see an area where students can have a safe place in every high school or middle school, uh, within the state of Michigan, and that would be the goal that I think all of us, um, would, uh, look for. So, um, I really don't have any questions except to say to you and to your colleagues, thank you for your time, for your insights, um, and, um, your perspectives, uh, about especially the tough questions, uh, when they come. It's easy to have safe spaces when everybody is the same, but sometimes people have different views, uh, and that's okay. Uh, but how do we deal with that and how do we understand that? And you clearly have the maturity to, uh, move forward with that. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Tilly?
I'm going to repeat some of the sentiments and say, thank you so much for sharing. Thank you so much for your leadership. Um, some of the conversations, um, I'm sure in those spaces are not easy. Um, some of the conversation here may not have been so easy, but definitely appreciate your leadership and being an, an example. This is a great example for, um, our, our, our other schools across the state, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
One other question.
Yeah.
That, um, got me thinking about one other thing. What if conversations of people with differing views makes people uncomfortable in these self-space, these safe spaces? They feel unsafe because of the conversations. How do you, does the conversation stop? Does the person, is there a vote? Does the person say, does they have to leave because they don't feel it's a safe space for them? How do you deal with that kind of thing?
All right, maybe you could repeat what you said.
Well, we would definitely address the discomfort, but also, like, we're kind of there to speak about it, to talk about it. And there, we do have, um, part of, I forgot which chapter, but we talk about, like, establishing kind of sort of, like, a rule set or some sort of, like, parameters to, like, how do I express this? Just, um-
Boundaries.
Yeah. Boundaries and, well, when we have some sort of, like, top, like, topic or some sort of, like, discomfort, someone feels unsafe, it's going to be addressed and talked about. It's kind of sort of, like, when it emerges, it emerges, and it's going to be dealt with. That's also part of the reason why we do have, like, some sort of adult supervisor kind of sort of there to, like, moderate, but also, I'm not sure if that helps, but-
Yeah, so I mean, it, somebody who feels unsafe could stop the conversation, or somebody who feels unsafe may not, the, the conversation may not stop. It's kind of depends on-
Kind of depends on the conversation.
It's not stopped in its tracks, but there's a, there's a resetting of the, the conversation. People acknowledge that, that someone was hurt. Um, there, there, there's an effort to address that, uh, rupture and then, and then to move forward from there. Conversation doesn't, doesn't halt. Um, you want to, who wants to talk, um, uh, I mean, I think you, you began with the ouch, oops. Anybody want to, want, want to take that to, to the conclusion?
Anyone want to say more about that?
Yeah, well, I'll just say that safe spaces are super-duper important for the education aspect. And like Ari said earlier, we have, um, a part in the document called Oops, Ouch, Educate, where, you know, someone might say something that offends you, um, you call that out, and then we educate each other on that, and then we move on with the conversation. That's kind of the whole, you know, thing about safe spaces, is it's supposed to make people more aware of things, and, um, it's really just a big learning space.
And you have to be proactive about keeping it a safe space.
Yep.
Say that again, please.
You have to be proactive about keeping it a safe space.
You have to be vigilant. Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Tilly?
I wanted to add that the student voice, um, piece is so powerful, being able to, um, (sigh) take ownership of the group and guide the group. That piece is so powerful. And sometimes, you know, we avoid conversations because they're uncomfortable, but then when we navigate through those conversations, we find out that we can come to some type of common ground a lot of times. So that piece is very important as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other board members? Other reflections? Dr. Pugh?
I mean, I just really ditto what most of my board members, um, have already said, and I just thank you. I thank you for, for being so courageous and just encourage you all to, to keep up, uh, what it is that, that you are doing. Um, and, you know, I just wish that I had a group like this when I was, uh, your age and growing up. It wasn't that long ago, but (laugh) but I just thank you all.
Well, for some of us, Dr. Pugh, it was a long time ago. So, and, and I resemble that remark. Um, what, what the young people have not shared is that, um, completely, because they've been, they've been kind of, uh, dressed up today in a fashion, but they, they've gone through their own struggles at school. They've alluded to some of those, um, about, you, you know, keep pressing forward, try to, try to establish your, your, uh, group, either support or active, but, but keep pushing forward because you may or may not get, uh, backing or encouragement in your, uh, school community. And that can be discouraging, it can be challenging, but you have to press, um, press forward. They've been pretty succinct in some of the challenges that they've, um, faced. Um, you've recognized that, uh, these groups can be supportive or active. You've recognized implicitly that they can be informal or formal. Uh, a, a teacher's classroom at lunch can be a safe space. It's not a formal group, it may not have a name. Um, it may be Mr. Bulmer's lunch crew or third-period lunch crew or, 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 but it's a place you feel comfortable, um, catching your breath and talking with, um, a teacher or with, with, um, with fellow students. I want to lift up student voices as, as, um, Ms. Tilly did. I want to lift up your voices as well. Um, your voices are powerful, and they are becoming more so as you work with one another, so I appreciate that. I also want to, um, thank, um, Brishero Bailey and Allison Shrewsbury and Bivra Has Mills, in addition to Dr. Garcia, who have helped, um, work with the young people over the last three and a half years. And, um, to my students, um, I appreciate you more than, um, you know, I feel a real distance in this role from young people, and you help bridge to some degree that distance. So, so thank you very much. Happy holidays, um, to all of you. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten thirty-three, and the next item on today's agenda is a presentation on Advanced Placement or AP Expansion. This presentation will share the purpose and benefits of high school students participating in advanced placement courses as well as Michigan students' AP performance and enrollment data. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent, Division of Educator, Student, and School Support; Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director in the Office of Educational Support. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, board. I am joined today by Dr. Edwards to provide highlights, efforts, and the increased success specific to advanced placement performance and enrollment here in Michigan. Central to the work at the Michigan Department of Education and within the Division of Educator, Student, and School Supports is alignment of our work to Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. As such, this slide here highlights the direct alignment of advanced placement to goal four, expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. Here we see that at present, we have six areas of measure relative to expanding secondary learning opportunities. These include career in technical, education or CTE, early-middle college, EMC, dual enrollment or DE, international baccalaureate designated as IB, and special education transition services. Today, as we highlight here on the screen, our focus will be an update with highlights specific to performance and enrollment of advanced placement. And now, Dr. Edwards will guide us in understanding what is advanced placement.
Good morning again. While most are aware of advanced placement, here we want to quickly highlight a few important features regarding the AP program. AP or advanced placement courses are available in many high schools and expose students to college-level material. AP courses are offered in various subjects. As of 2023, there are thirty-eight possible AP subjects and exams. AP students may take AP, uh, exams at the end of the course.
for which, depending on the college or university they are attending, the student may receive credit if they achieve above a minimum score, which is determined by the higher education institution, and/or receive placement in higher-level college courses if applicable. While there is a fee for the exam, Michigan has legislative funding to provide financial assistance to students who take AP as well as IB or international baccalaureate and/or college-level examination placement exams or CLEP. There are also many potential benefits from participation in advanced placement courses, including a chance to learn exciting subjects in greater depth, mental preparation for college and university course rigor. AP courses directly teach students how to study and manage their time. It helps to expand participation in rigorous coursework in high school, particularly for those from historically underrepresented groups. It provides the potential to receive course credit from some colleges and universities and the opportunity to potentially bypass introductory courses with some colleges and universities and still receive college credit. While advanced placement is an opportunity for exposure to college coursework in high school, it's only one option for advanced learning and helping students to realize the fullest potential of their post-secondary life goals. Other such options include dual enrollment, which provides opportunity for students to participate in college-level courses taken at a college or university in the high school setting or remotely, in which students can receive high school and college credit at the same time without having to take an additional exam. Early middle college programs, also, these are five-year programs within which students can earn a high school diploma along with one or more of the following. 60 transferable college credits, an associate degree, a professional certification, the Michigan Early Middle College Association Technical Certification, or participation in a registered apprenticeship program. There's also international baccalaureate or IP diploma and career-related programs, as well as career and technical education opportunities. The Michigan Department of Education values all of these rigorous learning opportunities and recognizes that not all opportunities are available in high schools in Michigan. As you can see, these are the programs Dr. Edwards just highlighted for us in the previous slides and the associated data. We would like to note here that they compete for the participation of secondary students based on the variance of offerings provided by local school districts and partnering organizations. It is important to note as well that the promotion and sustained implementation of advanced placement is a concerted effort between MDE, LEAs, and affiliate partners. Dr. Edwards will share the various roles within those organizations that lend to advanced placement being an expanded learning opportunity for Michigan students. As shared, we'll just cover some of the roles of the organizations within Michigan related to AP. The Michigan Department of Education provides guidance and support to districts. The Michigan Department of Education uses the AP potential tool to send letters to parents and guardians of students who are likely to succeed in advanced coursework and encourage students to participate in AP courses and other rigorous learning opportunities such as dual enrollment, CTE, and IB. Finally, MDE shares statewide AP data annually with the Michigan State Board of Education through presentations like this as part of monitoring Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Local education agencies may offer students an array of AP courses as part of the district's course catalog, teach AP courses, submit enrollment data, and administer AP exams. If local education agencies do not offer AP opportunities or do not have the specific AP course a student would like to participate in, Michigan Virtual University offers online AP courses for Michigan students. Finally, the College Board provides free curriculum materials to districts for AP classes, develops and distributes AP exams, and reports AP performance data to students, schools, and states. Additionally, the Center for Educational Performance and Information, or CEPI, is responsible for collecting and reporting Michigan AP enrollment data for all student groups. As we prepare to transition into a review of data regarding Michigan students' participation in AP courses, it is important to distinguish between two status measures, AP enrollment and AP performance. Students who participate in an AP course are AP enrollees. They may opt to take an AP course, but not the examination. Students enrolled in an AP course who choose to take an AP exam are included in the AP performance data. Students who receive an AP exam score of three, four, or five may be eligible to receive course credit at some colleges and universities. Thanks, Dr. Edwards, for the distinction between AP enrollment and AP performance. The next series of slides will highlight the successful performance of students relative to total number of students taking the AP exam and those scoring a three, four, or five, which makes them eligible for receiving college credit. Here you can see an 11% increase in the number of students taking one or more AP exams, a significant increase after a decline first associated with competition with other programs of rigor that we've shared this morning and then associated with the pandemic. On this slide, you can see a 14% increase in the total number of AP exams taken. Again, a significant increase after a decline first associated with competition among programs and then associated with the pandemic. And now, I will highlight the number of students taking one or more AP exams by ethnicity. We see here to the right double-digit increases for Asian, Black, or African-American students and Hispanic or Latino students, along with a marginal increase for students of two or more races. It is significant to note here, in the case of Black or African-American students and Hispanic or Latino students, that the increases for both are higher than the 12% increase for this year nationally. On this slide, we see the same data for Native American and Native Hawaiian students. These are very small populations of students across the state. Lastly, we share data regarding our white students taking the exam. In the last year, we show a 7% increase after declines associated again with the competition of expanded program offerings and the pandemic. Here you can see one-year differences in the number of students that generate college credit based on scoring a three, four, or five on the AP exam and the total number of exams taken statewide with scores of three, four, or five. Now, let's look at performance by ethnicity. I would like to highlight the outstanding 38% increase in Black or African-American students who scored a three, four, or five on the exam from 2022 to 2023 compared to 17% nationally. Additionally, we had an increase of 21% of Hispanic or Latino students who scored a three, four, or five compared to the national reported data of 14%. In the past year, Michigan has outperformed the national increase in three distinct areas as we see here on the screen. First, the number of students taking AP exams. Secondly, the total number of exams taken. And finally, the number of exams with scores of three or higher, which makes the completed course, as noted earlier, eligible for college credit. Here we would like to highlight the increase in students by ethnicity again with exam scores of three or higher in Michigan as compared to nationally for both Black or African-American students and Latino or Hispanic students. It is worthy to note that Black or African-American students increased students with exam scores of three or higher by 38% versus the national increase of 17%. Again, Michigan Hispanic or Latino students increased by 21% in the same area in comparison to the national rate of 14%. On this slide, we see the number of students by ethnicity taking exams with significant increases in comparison to national data. For Black or African-American students, Michigan had a 28% increase over the past year in comparison to the national increase of 11.5%. For the same data, Hispanic or Latino students increased the number of students taking AP exams by 18% in comparison to a national increase of 11.5%. And now, Dr. Edwards will share data points specific to AP enrollment. Thank you. As we transition into enrollment data, we're going to start with advanced placement enrollment results for Michigan. Here we see the statewide enrollment of secondary students and expanding learning options as we shared earlier. While there is competition between programs, good, healthy competition, lots of offerings, but we see a steady enrollment of nearly 50% of students statewide with nearly 20% of the enrollment being in advanced placement. Here we see the total number of students enrolled for nearly a decade, and there has been an increase within the past year. And just this last year, and just this last year, we've seen a 3% increase in students enrolled or participating in AP courses after the decline first associated with students enrolled in rigorous courses and the number of high school students eligible to participate. Here we see a 10% enrollment increase of Black or African-American students and Hispanic students were just shy of 10%. And here we have a breakdown for our Native American or Alaskan native and Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islanders. Again, small numbers, but progress. And here you can see the change in our white students, a little bit up, first as a function of competition amongst opportunities for rigorous learning, but second as a function of the pandemic. Here you can see enrollment increases in our non-economically disadvantaged students, again due in part to competition as well as the adverse effects of the pandemic. But the bright side is that here we see a 15% increase in our students who are economically disadvantaged that are enrolling in AP and participating in courses. And now, Dr. Chapman will close us out with some highlights on the AP potential tool and the efforts of MDE. Thanks, Dr. Edwards. The Advanced Placement Tool is a free online tool that allows schools to generate rosters of students who are likely to score a three or higher on an AP exam based on their performance on the SAT suite of assessments, PSAT eight or nine and/or PSAT 10 results. Using this tool, the MDE generates a roster of students and then sends a letter to the parent or guardian of the student. This letter is intended to encourage students to realize their potential, hence the name of the tool, AP Potential Tool. This letter is intended to encourage students to realize their potential to be successful in rigorous coursework and college-level learning experiences while yet in high school, including AP as well as dual enrollment, CTE, and IB. Michigan is one of only two state departments of education using the AP Potential Tool and sending letters to students. In 2022, the MDE sent over 40,000 letters, 41,879 to be exact. This year, in 2023, MDE sent nearly 90,000 letters, 89,477 to be exact. The increase in numbers from '22 to '23 is largely attributed to AP seminar being added to the AP Potential Tool for the first time this year. We close this presentation today with some testimonials regarding the power of these letters sent to parents and families. The Michigan Department of Education has received outreach from parents, students, and school administrators thanking us for the letter, a few examples of which are shared on the slide here. These letters can make a real difference in students' lives. Students can thrive when they are told they are talented and capable and have potential, and therefore, we support them. This concludes our presentation and update on advanced placement. Thank you, Board, for this opportunity. Now, Dr. Rice, to you for questions.
And, Dr. Edwards, we appreciate the presentation. We appreciate the good news and the statistics, as always. Mr. Bullock.
I just got questions of curiosity. My brain operates backwards. So, thank you for the presentation. I think it was on the sheet, the page, the slide, Enrollment vs. Performance, said students who enroll but don't take the test. I'm sure there's various reasons why they don't allow students. How often do they re-enroll in it? Like, can I take a course three times? Is there any penalty or, like, how does that work?
Well, you can only take the AP course one time. But if you choose to take the exam, you can choose to take it at that point after you complete the course or if you want to take the course later. For example, if I'm a junior and I take an AP class and I choose not to maybe take the exam that year, I can take the exam the later year.
Or if I can't redo the AP course?
Can't redo the course, no.
Okay, and then, on the graphs, we were saying that there was a decline due to competition. Is that from other agencies who now engage in providing AP training or courses? Or prior to the pandemic, it said, do the competition. You said it multiple times.
If you, you want to go? Okay. And I'll follow up. If you, I think one of the things to notice is that when you look at the data on this slide and you look at high school students, the competition is really about choosing amongst the offerings. And I think that's a wonderful problem to have, if you will. Students have so many options to choose from and only so many students are vying for those same programs. And so, you may see some ebb and flow as it depends on the elementary, middle school prep for those kids as well as just interest within that community.
And my last, I want to follow on that with y'all later, but the last one is the rates. The national rate versus Michigan's rate or the data of how we sold. So, it was in my quirkiness. The relative start point, so like if you say the national rate increased 12%, if they started at 48%, they go up 12, they're at 60. But if the state's starting at 30 and they go up 24%, they're only at 54. So, like, what are the starting points of the data point?
That's a great question, and we can, we will pull that data together.
Why don't you share slides 21 and 22? Because there's some clarity that we need to add. Okay? So, there are groups of young people, African-American, Latino, economically disadvantaged, that are historically underrepresented in AP work and other work of rigor. Not that they are incapable, but that they typically don't. Not that they are incapable, but that they typically don't avail themselves of the opportunities or don't have the opportunities. So, these are increases, both in Michigan and nationally, off bases that are too low. We acknowledge that. But you can't build a better past, you can only build a better future.
Totally with the, my brain just wanted to know what, because disadvantaged and disenfranchised and underrepresented, I get, I just wanted to know what the starting points for the data is. So, for my own edification, that's why, the questions of curiosity.
Okay, well, no, edification, edification is good. No, I didn't, I didn't view it as adversarial. If we could turn to slide nineteen, please.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm incorporating all that in my head.
Right. So, so take, for example, the row on Black or African American students. You can see an increase of students with a score of three, four, or five growing from eight hundred and fifty-one in 2022 to eleven hundred and seventy-six
Yes.
in 2023. An increase of three hundred and twenty-five students, an increase of thirty-eight percent. For Latino, that increase was from eighteen hundred and fifty-eight in 2022 to twenty-two forty-eight in 2023, an increase of three hundred and ninety students or twenty-one percent. If you go to slide twenty-one, you can see where those increases are relative to the national increases. So thirty-eight percent for Michigan, an increase in in Black students compared to a seventeen percent increase nationally. For Hispanic students in Michigan, twenty-one percent increase versus a fourteen percent increase nationally. The interesting thing about this is, so you had a tug downward on AP numbers pre-pandemic because students were looking at CTE and dual enrollment and early middle college and IB as well as AP.
That's the competition.
Yep. And then, and then you had the pandemic tugging additionally. Subsequently, you have pent-up demand, not only for AP, but for these other elements of rigor because young people, in certain cases during the pandemic, didn't have these opportunities or didn't avail themselves of the opportunities, perhaps because they weren't in school, perhaps because they were in school, but there was disruption with their teachers, and, and, and. So you see a pent-up demand manifesting itself as increases in both Michigan and nationally. Our increases well exceeding national increases because we're leaning into them.
Yeah, I love the increase. I just wanted to.
I know you do, yeah, yeah.
So, I wanted, yeah.
Okay. More questions?
Not for me.
Okay, all right. Mr. McMillan and then Dr. Robinson.
I guess, you know, looking at these statistics, it really feels like there's a lot of cherry picking of statistics going on. I mean, there is nowhere where it says the percent who passed, who took it, or who took the class. Everything is about increases of taking exams or increases of a three or better. So I, you know, I don't, I mean, it just seems like, okay, we got these statistics. Let's pick the ones that, you know, give the best story. So I, I'm surprised, disappointed, but not too surprised that there's, there's the key, the main, the most important statistics were left out. Secondly, I found it in Chalkbeat, a five-year-old article, which I'm hoping maybe things have changed and somebody can explain it to me. In Chalkbeat, I've been interviewed. They're relatively fair. I think they're left-leaning or maybe liberal mainly, their perspective. The article was, more students are taking AP exams, but researchers don't know if that helps them. And it says, so the rapid expansion of AP, has it been a net good for students in schools? A new review of research provides a stark reminder that we simply don't know the answer to that or a number of other important questions about AP courses. And then later on, it says, unsurprisingly, students who score a three or higher on the AP exam do better in college, but remarkably, there is virtually no research pinning down cause and effect. That is whether taking AP courses actually helps students succeed. The association could be due to factors like a student's high school quality or their own motivation. So, I guess, I'm just wondering if things have changed in the last five years? If there is some proof that, you know, getting kids to take the AP is actually helpful? They talk a little bit more about other alternatives, community college and others. But, I mean, is it, are we certain that getting kids to take AP classes helps them? Could some of it not be helpful to them? I guess that's my question.
So, as a rule, I think rigor is helpful for young people, and I believe AP is a part of that rigor. I'm going to share for a few minutes, so you can relax for a second. Those forms of rigor are outlined in Goal Four, the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. They include, but aren't limited to CTE, AP, IB, early middle college, dual enrollment, and for students with disabilities, transition services. Those are all forms of rigor of one sort or another. And on average, young people benefit from rigorous offerings, recognizing that rigor may look different for one child to another, and every child doesn't have the same experience in a given course that another child may. Judy Pritchett, age sixteen years old, and Michael Rice, age sixteen years old, may be in the same AP class along with Marshall Bullock. We may have three separate experiences in that AP class. Marshall may have a terrific experience. Little Judy, in the same class, may have an okay experience. I may have a disastrous experience. It doesn't necessarily speak to AP offerings, per se. It may speak to my readiness for the class or the teacher's readiness to teach the class or a whole series of factors. But in general, greater rigor is helpful for the young people. So that's one, too. I do believe that we have, in fact, I know that we have shared pass rates extensively. We share them on a regular basis when we do our annual presentation on our Goal Four expansion of secondary school programs. We also look at pass rates when we put out press releases, and we've shared those with the board. We look at pass rates when we, when we do our annual State of the State address as well, and we can certainly reshare those pass rates. It's hard to imagine a charge of cherry picking, sticking. If you could go to slide seventeen, please.
I'm already there for you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you. So, here's, here's an example of the decline in students taking one or more AP exam from 2018 to 2021. First is a function of competition with other programs of rigor, and then as a function of the pandemic. It's hard to understand why someone would cherry pick the decline in order to inflate a sense of the results. If we could, if you would be kind enough to turn to slide thirteen. Number of students taking one or more AP exam. Again, a decline from 2018 to 2021, as Dr. Chapman and Dr. Edwards noted, first associated with competition among other forms of rigor, and then a function of the pandemic. If you could turn to slide fourteen, please. Number of AP exams taken. Here's a decline from 2018 to 2021, first associated with other forms of rigor and then associated with the pandemic. But if you'd be kind enough to turn back to slide seven. The point that Dr. Chapman and Dr. Edwards were making was that young people have choices, not in all schools and not the same choices across schools, but they have choices. And so the child who's in AP may not be able to avail him or herself of the opportunity to go to an early middle college program or vice versa. So they tug on one another. And over a period of years, we saw a substantial increase in early middle college. We saw a small increase in dual enrollment. We saw an increase in career and technical education, and they tugged on AP. What we're trying to do is we're trying to say, rising tide raises all boats, but we're trying to increase all of these forms of rigor and to expand the extent to which young people experience these forms of rigor, CTE, AP, IB, early middle college, and dual enrollment across the, across the state. I hope that was helpful.
It wasn't. If I can reply.
Please.
There is no percentage given today of the percent that got a three, by groups, that got a three, four, or five compared to those who took the class or took the course. There's, you know, I'm not exactly sure. There's nothing that shows the percent. I mean, I think that would be the most important thing, the most illuminating thing. But that was left out because I think it probably isn't very help, it doesn't help the narrative. Second thing would be the percent of who took it, who, who took the class and who got a three, four, or the exam. You know, I might be able to do some of the math, but it looks difficult between page or slide fifteen and nineteen. So, I mean, these are the most important. They're not there. You know, my, I think it's clear that the ones that are out there, they might be helpful, but I think the most helpful, the most illuminating, aren't there. And I, you know, yeah, rigor, more rigor could be good. I mean, if that were the case, why don't we give all kids third, you know, third-year college courses? Boy, that's rigorous. No, I mean, there's certain rigor that might be good. There's certain rigor that might be harmful and bad. So, and according to this article, research, not gut feelings, but research, doesn't show that it's helpful to kids. Maybe it's helpful to some, maybe it's harmful to others. So I'd like to know, is there research that have come out in the last five years to make it clear that we're not harming these kids by pushing them into AP and telling parents that your kids should take AP because maybe they shouldn't? And so that's, you know, I'm just asking the question. I'm looking at here from a source that's certainly not right-wing or conservative, saying, we aren't sure, nobody's sure whether these things are helpful or not.
Okay, thank you very much. So there's no research that's come out since then? Dr. Robinson?
First of all, thank you. There's a ton of information, ton of data that you've had to slice and dice, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. So I'm looking at slide seven, and I see all these, these different options, right? As Dr. Rice has outlined. It seems like all of them, except for the AP courses, are things that are at least offered through or provided through public school enrollment. Is that right? So, career and technical education, early middle college, dual enrollment, international bachelor, those are all things that are offered through students, there are choices students can make when they're in a public school district. They don't have to pay extra tuition for early middle college. That's paid for by the school system, right? Except for advanced placement. And the College Board charges currently ninety-seven dollars per exam. You said there was some, some students are able to get financial aid for that. But, you know, the College Board is, it's a nonprofit with over a billion dollars in reserves and takes in over a billion dollars each year in revenue. So, what, one of my kind of concerns here is that part of this is we're offloading the responsibility for education from the public education system, which we all fund through our taxes, to private from tax, from dollars out of somebody's pocket, right? A family is paying for that ninety-seven or two times ninety-seven or five times ninety-seven. So I guess one of my questions is, how, how many students, how many tests are being subsidized or paid for by the state? And, you know, what, what is our kind of position on, on a nonprofit third party making this much money off of families in the state for educational experiences?
I guess I want to make sure that, that we're clear on the fact that there's no charge for a school to offer an AP course.
Right, no, exactly right.
So, but there are charges for the exam as well as for IB exams. There are charges. Which, again, the state provides that financial support for.
And to clarify again, all of those are optional.
Yes.
No one's being forced to take an AP exam. No one's being forced to be an IB. Okay. So, but maybe you could get back to us with how much, how many tests are being, you know, kids are getting, families are getting help from the state?
Yeah, we can definitely pull the data from the last.
We can share that because there's a, I've got you, Ms. Snyder. There's an appropriation in the State School Aid Act to offset the cost of advanced placement test participation for economically disadvantaged youth. What we're not going to be able to share with you is how many school districts paid for those, separate and distinct from the state. So, for example, when I was superintendent in Kalamazoo, in order to help raise advanced placement participation, what I noticed was young people weren't taking the courses, number one. They weren't taking the tests, number two. And then when they began to take the courses, they decided, well, maybe they wouldn't take the tests. And some teachers said, well, maybe they, they shouldn't take the tests as well. Well, the tests are a check on both the learning and the teaching. And I wanted to see how young people were going to do on the tests. One, because I was curious about the strength of the teaching and learning experience. But two, because I wanted them to have the opportunity to gain college credit. In the absence of the test and success on the test, you don't get the college credit. So, my board, on my recommendation, paid for all the AP tests for all the young people in the district. We're not going to be able, you're not going to be able to track that.
We don't have a sense of how pervasive that is.
We do not, we do not, no. I just know that, that, that is not beyond the realm of possibility for other districts in, in the state. For, for some communities, it's moot because they're predominantly poor and the state picks up the expense. For some, they're predominantly wealthy, and it's, it's a non-issue for them. A test, you know, in or around a hundred bucks a pop. But for those that are marbled socioeconomically that, whose, some of whose students may qualify for a free test from the state, some of whose students may not, and you're trying to drive these numbers and, and the rigor that helps young people once they get to college, both before college and once they get to college, removing that barrier, however small it may seem for some of us, is an important piece for, for our young people. I would like to respond to a question that Mr. Bullock asked about who takes the, who takes the course, who takes the test? Because it is true that you can take a test later, after the course. What's also true and less well-understood is you can take a test without taking the course at all.
Correct.
In my former, former district, I had trouble convincing a particular administrator that in a school district that was almost forty-four percent Latino, that our young people were capable of success in AP Spanish. And after trying to convince that individual, I just said, test twelve young people, pay for the test and see how they do. Eleven of the twelve, without taking the course in AP Spanish, got college credit. These are native Spanish speakers. They're speaking Spanish at home with mom or dad, grandma or grandpa, speaking it, listening it, and, and, and. And I felt that they were capable, as a result, of not only success on, in the course, but also on the exam as, as well. So sometimes people will take a test without taking a course. I did that a number of times when I was in high school. Dr. Robinson, any other questions?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
A lot to unpack here, but you did just say something that I want to comment on. It's the many students that you referred to being in predominantly wealthy communities whose family budgets still don't allow for paying for that test that then academically speaking, they're qualified to take the course, take the test, but they still don't have access. So the concept of an education system that doesn't write that for all students based on the community they're from or the family budget that, that their family has is just, it's something we have to tackle and address. And then there's a couple of things here. So, I took an AP course in high school. It was biology. It helped, you know, ready me for the rigor of a nursing program that didn't accept anybody with lesson of four point oh. And I never took the test. I didn't feel like it was a valuable thing to me. I didn't mind taking. I, I didn't mind taking the coursework again. I wanted to have the information and keep chewing it and learning and growing. So, this is good for students. There's no doubt about it. But there's really no data here even on gender breakdown, right? So, there's something to be said for, through the pandemic, we saw standardized test scores go down for one group more than any other, and it's girls. When we think about what it looks like to honor Title IX, equal access to public education, we can't leave that data out. That includes AP coursework and all of the options that they have. How are they doing? Check in on them. Whether you take the test or not, this is, it, it is important to put rigorous options out there for everyone and to ensure that they truly have access to it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you for the presentation. And just to, um, sort of comment or just to, just to give some additional context. The AP exam, there are, um, it, it is true that the college board is, in my opinion, first and foremost, a business. So, you're going to see that, um, as colleges during the pandemic went, um, test optional and revenue of the college board went down on their standardized testing bucket of revenue, um, they began to push, um, the AP, um, and the revenue that they generate from the AP tests to, to, um, to offset the revenue that they were losing from, um, students not necessarily taking the standardized test. That's probably going to shake out, depending on whether more and more colleges go test optional. But the, I, I don't think, the, 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 that, that's not to say that there isn't value in AP, but I think we should all be very, very cognizant of the fact that the college board, although a nonprofit, is a, uh, massive revenue generating monolith in the, in the education space. And they're going to market, um, the use of AP testing because that's really, uh, a growth in their revenue as their, um, uh, college entrance exam revenue goes down. So, we just need to be cognizant of that. As someone that has been working for the past decade in, um, college access and college scholarships in particularly high needs districts, I will tell you, I'll be the first one to say, that the availability of AP tests is very, I'm sorry, the availability of AP classes, not tests, AP classes is extremely valuable in creating an overall college-going culture, not just amongst students, but families as well as teachers. There's oftentimes a lot of excitement when you're trying to build a college-going culture and start talking about post-secondary. Having AP classes available are part of that sort of overall mix. So, there's value in that. I will tell you, um, the value, many students opt not to take the exam for a variety of reasons. Many of them having to do with the fact that the teacher is already giving the exam, giving an exam that's not necessarily the AP test, um, because they want to be able to grade the student, um, and students don't necessarily have the money or the school district doesn't have the money to pay for the test. Oftentimes, the AP test is, is not an issue. They just, they don't take it because they're already taking a test that the teacher, um, is giving that's free. Another reason is that despite the marketing that AP will use to say that you will get college credit, and they've even now couched by saying you may get college credit, most schools are very, very resistant to give, they'll give college, um, recognition so that they'll say, "You don't have to take this entrance levic, level exam. You can take the next level." But to actually present it that a student will be able to graduate in quicker or in, you know, three years or what have you.
Inaccurate.
Reality, that, that's, that's not, that's not happening. Colleges will not, they will come up with every reason to tell the student, "You're going to take your full four years and then sign at our university." So, I'm just, so the, so that is marketing. It's not, it's not reality. But insofar as uplifting, creating a college-going culture, and the fact that we sent out those letters, that, to me, was, that was a, such a show of leadership on the part of the state. Only one of two states to do it. It did have an effect because I was on the receiving end of many families that received those letters and were absolutely ecstatic because, again, we're trying to build a college going culture. It was all part of that, so.
Thank you very much for sharing that, Ms. Lipton. Other reflections by board members? Uh, Dr. Pugh, and then we'll move on to it.
And Ellen, um, board member Lipton took the words out of my mouth, but I'll just reiterate that I do have some of the same concerns that have been expressed here. But I did also hear from parents that they were very excited, very pleased and grateful for the department for laying out those academic opportunities for, for their children, so.
Thanks, Ms. Snyder. You know, I, I guess the only thing that I want to say also is that there's always an opportunity cost. And so, um, you know, they may be taking this because they like chemistry, so they want to get into chemistry. But maybe if they had, on the other hand, a self-directed class, that they could take chemistry and dive into areas that they particularly like, as opposed to the curriculum that kind of is required by the college board or by, you know, whoever is going to decide the, the curriculum. Or, you know, I guess a lot of it is tailored around the test, teaching to the test to some degree, at least I, I would assume. So, there's always just an opportunity cost. And, you know, the, this article had mentioned versus going to community college. Again, I, yeah, I mean, going, the rigor, you know, having somebody deep dive into an area certainly can provide benefits, but is there something that could be better? I guess should always be kind of asked as well.
That's, uh, that's, those are the choices that our, uh, students and their parents make, um, every year in local high schools. And in many cases, they vote with their feet. Ladies, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity.
We appreciate you. Board members, it's eleven twenty-four. The next item on today's agenda is a presentation on the improvement of Michigan's school environment, including Michigan Healthy Schools Program and the School Infrastructure Study. Representatives from the Michigan Department of Education, the School Finance Research Foundation, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or Eagle, will be co-presenting on Section twelve A of the State School Aid Act titled, "The Michigan Healthy Schools Program and Other Initiatives and Programs Related to, uh, Healthy School Environments." This presentation is for information purposes only. No action is required. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Finance and Operations, Mike Leedhead, interim supervisor in the School Health and Safety Unit, Stephen Ezikian, Executive Director of the School Finance Research Foundation. Good to see you again. Dr. Sarah Lyon-Callo, State Epidemiologist and Public Health Director, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And Travis Buskel, Deputy Director of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. This is truly a, uh, strong panel. This is an information presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us to be here with you today. We will get started first with the My Healthy School and Clean School Bus Programs that are run here out of the Department of Education.
Yeah, and good morning and, and thank you for the opportunity for us to speak with you today on these two MDE programs. And, um, so, yeah, as on the slide, part of the, well, the one that's titled the My Healthy School Program is Section twelve A of the State School Aid Budget, fifty million dollars for competitive grants. It is a work project and the anticipated completion date would be September thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. And two main goals for this section would be to lower the energy costs and improve health outcomes. And we'll go into some details of what, what that is all about. And as, uh, Dr. Rice had mentioned, yes, is a collaboration, uh, between, um, MDE and then, as he had mentioned, the Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy and the Health, Department of Health and Human Services. So, I'll refer to Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy as Eagle and, and then MDHHS. So, I, I will use those acronyms from here on out. So, in this piece of legislation, there are several criteria to prioritize for, um, districts or schools, uh, hoping to apply for these funds. And so, they're listed there, but really what this gets to is, um, these different criteria, there are different locations for the information. You can think of them somewhat like heat maps and different areas of the information. So, and, for instance, the justice forty parameters, you have to go to a certain, uh, location for that information. The National Ambient Air Quality Standards and Nonattainment Zones, you have to go a certain place for that information, and so on. And so, then, uh, with needing to prioritize these pieces of, um, information and then really take it to, for the school districts and their area, right, the, the school district area as well, and really trying to figure out a, um, an equitable and a, in a, in a solid way on how to really appropriately prioritize, um, these, these pieces of, uh, data that we have to use. And so, then another component to this as well is looking into the applications and giving priority to those districts that are using unionized, you, you, unionized labor and Michigan companies. And then another piece is that then we, the initial distribution of funds need to go to, uh, any of those schools that participated in the Racial Disparities Task Course Initiative. So, we had those two goals that I had mentioned. Now, what can those funds be used for? And so, in, as defined in the statute, and again, more details are in the statute, right? We're giving you a high, high view of this, but indoor quality improvements, for instance, HVAC and air conditioning, energy enhancements, including energy efficiencies, onsite renewable energy production, facility electrification. But in that bullet, there, there's some stipulations to that, um, that we have to be mindful of. Uh, toxin remediation. The legislation spells out lead, you know, removal of lead and also accordance to other law about, uh, the removal of asbestos. And then, uh, the fourth component, what the funds can be used for is drinking water, system upgrades, um, and the hydration sta, uh, stations.
All right. Next, we have the Clean School Bus Program. This is Section seventy-four B of the State School Aid Act, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in competitive grants. This is to support districts and ISDs in, um, transitioning to environmentally friendly transportation vehicles. It might be the conversion of current vehicles. It might be the purchase of new vehicles. And this, again, is a collaboration with Eagle and MDE. Districts will be able to use the funds for the purchase or conversion, as I said. They can also use the funds for installing the necessary infrastructure to support that clean bus program. So, if it is electrified bus and they need an electric, electric, electrical station, I guess is the right word I was trying to think of, then they have the funds through this, um, particular line item to be able to do that. It also then can be used for ongoing maintenance and operational costs of those vehicles. You'll see the same prioritization categories as what you saw in the, um, Healthy Schools Program, the Justice Forty Parameters, National Ambient Air Quality Standard, Nonattainment Zones, et cetera. Next, we have Mr. Steve Ezikian.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this morning. I want to talk to you about the statewide infrastructure study and a little bit about the, um, energy efficiency study that's going on. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the state allocated twenty million dollars for a study of the school infrastructure in the state to assess the, um, the condition of that, that, that's, that infrastructure and the health and safety needs around that infrastructure. That, those funds were allowable to go to a ISD or a group of ISDs. And what ended up happening is all the ISDs came together under what's called the School Finance Research Foundation to do this study. I'm, I'm being the project manager on that study. So, all the districts and counties across the state are represented in this work. So, there are three thousand school buildings in Michigan, and it's, represents over two hundred and seventy million square feet of school buildings, public school buildings in the state. And our goal is to determine where are they at? You know, across the state, districts have different resources, um, to do infrastructure. Some of our, our districts in rural and, and suburban areas don't have the property values to levy taxes to do those school improvements. So, the question from the state was, so where are we at? What's the status of it? So, that project is, is starting. And again, it's a big project, three thousand buildings, a lot of square footage. And the study is intended to, limited purpose for the financial analysis, to give a report to the state of Michigan and let them know at a high level where we're, where we're at with the assessment of the building conditions focused on health and safety and wellness. This is not the same kind of study a district would do if they were doing, um, you know, specific renovations in their, their buildings. Here's the timeline. Really began back, uh, almost a year ago. An RFP was let this spring for eligible, um, architects and engineers to do that work. The SFRR Board awarded those bids in November. There are thirty-four different firms with over six hundred individuals that will be out in the field doing the work at these three thousand buildings. Right now, they are going through a training process to be able to, um, then gather the data in a, in a very equivalent way so that we're looking from apples to apples, from building to building. The actual field work will start in January and will go through the spring and the report will go to the legislature and by December of next year. Here's the things we're looking at, um, that are under health, safety, and wellness. Windows, walls, HVAC systems, doors, building exterior plumbing, electricity, roofs, site, and security. These are the specific areas. We're not looking at like carpeting and paint and things like that because we didn't feel like those affected health and safety issues. Interestingly, and we're going to talk about the energy efficiency audit in a second, some, there's some overlap here. So, if you look at, um, HVAC systems, if you've got aged HVAC systems in a building, that's the number one energy efficiency area that will, uh, you will find in a building if that gets replaced. Same with windows. I'm going to the next, uh, slide. I talked about the energy audit. That was under eleven AA in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, to allow school districts to do an energy to audit along with the infrastructure study or alongside the infrastructure study. Ninety-six percent of the districts in the state have opted into the, uh, infrastructure study. So far, only fifty-five percent of the districts have opted into the energy audit, but we're not done recruiting, recruiting there. Okay? And that's, that's where we're at right now, uh, and same with the energy audit. The work is exciting to set a benchmark from my perspective. There'll be work after that once we come up with a report, which will be an interesting report to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. So, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. You can see our mission there. We want to provide opportunities, services, programs that promote a healthy, safe, stable environment for residents to become self-sufficient. We have a number of programs that, um, support healthy school environments. One is our asthma prevention and control program. One is our Asthma Prevention and Control Program. That program and our partners work together to improve linkages and care coordination between schools, families, student medical providers. We also develop and promote the use of asthma educational materials and trainings for school personnel. And then we also promote asthma-friendly school policies, including the Michigan inhaler law. We're also fortunate to have two programs that are limited term funding. The first of those is the Health Resource Advocate Program or HRA program. That's available in K through 12 schools, and it offers a wide range of benefits that are meant to help improve health and well-being by increasing access to healthcare and education. This positively impacts student performance, attendance, and overall health of the school community, creating a supportive environment where students can thrive. This program currently is supporting local health departments, intermediate school districts and school districts. And we have HRE positions, we have over 100 HRE positions working with local health departments that then support schools. And we have 225 HRE positions that are located in ISDs or school districts. And then the last program there on that list is our Michigan Safe School Indoor Air Ventilation Program. This was launched in 2022 to help support the improvement of indoor air quality in schools. The program provides air purifiers, mobile air purifiers at no cost to Michigan schools. These are HEPA filtration systems, meaning that they can address viruses, wood smoke and other allergens. In the first phase of this program, we distributed filtration to, systems to 450 school districts that ended in July of 2023. And we're currently in phase two, and we're going to, we have about 28,000 more units, and we're going to be distributing more air purifiers to schools in early 2024. Right, and that is what I want to share.
Good morning. I'm Travis Boskal, Deputy Director with the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I have the notorious position of being the last person to speak to this group before lunch. So well aware of that, I won't be as efficient as Dr. Lian Cala was, but I'll do my best. So Eagle's mission, right, is to protect Michigan's environment and public health by managing our air, water, land and energy resources. And so I just want to say this presentation is really well timed because you'll, as you'll see during my conversation, there's some things we've been doing, but we're right on the early implementation phase of a couple of things. So a little bit of background on here first. So Eagle's School and Childcare Drinking Water Program, which we affectionately call Healthy Water, Healthy Kids. This is something we started back in 2016. It was a need that we really clearly saw from communities, from schools. Because there aren't, in a lot of cases, there aren't any drinking water regulations, at least not until recently, that apply directly and only to schools. And so this has primarily been a program to provide technical assistance, guidance and resources to schools who are reaching out, who want more information on water quality. Then in 2020, we received a grant from EPA for lead testing in schools in childcare drinking water. And that goal's obviously to, primarily to reduce childhood lead exposure. So that program's been primarily based on doing plumbing assessments, developing water management flushing plans, collecting and analyzing samples for lead, and providing training and guidance, all at no cost to the facility, whether that's a school or a childcare center. And then it also gives us the backdrop of funds for remediation efforts at schools and childcare centers to reduce that lead exposure. From EPA, that eligibility is targeted at facilities in disadvantaged communities and with the highest risk for lead exposure. We reach out proactively to some of those communities, to those schools, through mail and invite them to participate in the program. And the goal there is to get them to come in and to volunteer for that testing, determine if there's a risk, and then work with them to reduce that risk. If results come back from a fixture greater than five parts per billion for lead, that's when we start working, trying to take some action. And there are requirements on the school. They volunteer to come in and do that testing. There are requirements to work with us to abate that risk. So that's the foundation, yeah, go ahead, that sets us up for this legislation that was recently passed by the legislature and signed by the governor just a little less than two months ago. So it's the Clean Water Access Act, or maybe more colloquially known as Filter First. We're in the really early implementation stages, but you'll see how that program kind of, again, sets that foundation for this. So again, at its core, this is a program with an intent and a goal to look for and to reduce exposure to lead in drinking water at schools. And then there's another bill that also handles childcare centers across the state. So it starts with, over the next six months, Eagle's going to be taking a lot of what we've already built in that program and generalizing it in the form of templates, guidance, and then ongoing annual training for schools, for childcare centers on all the requirements under the statute. And then within 15 months, schools have to develop drinking water management plans. So what those will kind of look like, just to give you a sense, is identifying what filters within a school building are used for consumption or available for consumption, which ones aren't, making sure that those are clearly marked, plans for flushing, plans for sampling annually or biannually, depending on what kind of facility you are, in compliance with the statute. And then by the end of the 2025, 2026 school year, schools in particular have a requirement to install hydration stations. So picture drinking fountain with a bottle filling station on top. Those have filters certified to reduce lead exposure in drinking water. Childcare centers have a little bit more flexibility just recognizing that they're not necessarily as built out. And so pitcher filters, faucet mounted filters, that kind of thing. That works nicely with $50 million in funding that Eagle has from the state legislature that was very recently re-appropriated by the legislature. They made a change. So when it was first appropriated, it had a 50% match requirement for schools. The current legislature re-appropriated that and eliminated that match requirement. So now schools and childcare centers do not have a match requirement. That supplemental has not been signed by the governor yet. And so we'll be working with our partners here at the table to make sure we get that out efficiently because that is, that's also ARP dollars, so we're going to have to work quite quickly on that. Okay, I'm ready for the next slide. Also want to talk a little bit about air quality projects. So this is not something where Eagle's necessarily had a terrific amount of funding dedicated to work on this. But one area where we've been able to steer some benefits towards schools has been through what we call supplemental environmental projects through our air quality enforcement. So when we enter into enforcement action with a violator of state's air quality laws, eventually we get to the point where there is typically a penalty amount settled. And one thing that we really heard from communities is that rather than that money coming back to the state and the affected community not seeing any benefit from that action other than us getting the company back into compliance, is it'd be helpful to see some of that money come back to the community. And that just makes sense. So we have a policy that allows the entity we're in enforcement with to reduce a portion of their penalty amount by the monetary value of this supplemental environmental project. So it runs the gamut, but too specifically, we've seen a couple in the city of Detroit. One was at the Mark Twain School, and that installed air conditioning, improved air filtration and added an air purification system at the school. And then the other was at Southeastern High School in Detroit for a building management system. So focusing on higher energy efficiency, lower operating and maintenance costs, improved indoor air quality in the school. And you know, that's, again, it's taking the penalties from that enforcement action and making sure they stay in and benefit that community and benefit the people who've borne the burden of those violations. Going to be really brief on this one. I just couldn't miss the opportunity to highlight that Eagle houses Michigan's statewide Environmental Education Coordinator. So that is Eileen Buchenstein. Unfortunately, Eileen is out of the country, so I couldn't bring her with me today. But she works with schools to support student learning around basic sciences, natural resources, environment, provide technical assistance for schools who want to undertake projects around environmental quality, but also works with and runs the state Green Schools program. So Eileen, Green Schools, Eagle Classroom, all terrific resources in terms of our interaction with schools, highlighting resources like this, making sure that those opportunities aren't missed. And this last slide, I will not talk through in any detail. It's really just all of the different, all of the different other ways that our work touched schools. I actually really want to highlight that note at the bottom. So many of our programs are agnostic to the type of facility that they are regulating, but that doesn't mean that they're not regulating that facility. So lots of schools are regulated water supplies, under Eagle's water supply regulation, right? Air quality regulations, hazardous waste generation and handling, you think your chemistry lab, that kind of thing. But we touch on other things. I think we heard about school buses already. Eagle, due to the Volkswagen settlement, has distributed money for school buses that have reduced emissions compared to diesel. HVAC air quality, we have a lot of air quality monitors in heavily impacted communities near schools because we've heard from community members that having that information for where their children are going to school is really important, and a few other things there. So that wraps it up for me. Thanks for the time.
What questions can we answer?
Thank you very much.
Presenters, board members. Ms. Snyder.
Will we have follow-up presentations from this group? Will you come back to the board again? Is this, we won't hear from, we'll hear from them again, is what I'm asking.
We're happy to periodically re-invite them.
Okay.
And the better they're treated, the more likely it is they'll return. What are the questions we have, Ms. Snyder?
You've got this. So slide 15, it says, "High Level Non-Invasive Assessment of Building Conditions Focused on Health, Safety and Wellness." Can you bring back the copy of, or the paperwork that goes into what a high-level non-invasive assessment of building conditions looks like?
Yeah, I can get that.
Can we have, you know, whatever it is that you give to a local school or to the leader of that local school, it would be great to have that in front of us, to see exactly what that looks like or means. And then maybe an example of what you return to them. On slide five, I mean, there's quite a bit packed in here, so I'd have to take time to unpack it, but the first one saying using justice 40 parameters. If I go to the link on what the Justice 40 initiative is, it says, "For the first time in our nation's history, the federal government has made it a goal that 40% of the overall benefits of certain federal investments flow to disadvantaged communities that are marginalized, underserved and overburdened by pollution." My question will be, can you bring back a list of schools, once you've done this work, that qualify as disadvantaged, marginalized, underserved and overburdened by pollution? And then further, it talks about legacy pollution. Can we define that? You talked about auditing on a number of levels. Do you audit how many dollars districts have been allocating to infrastructure prior to these initiatives?
I don't know, but I will find out.
Okay. And do you intend to audit completion of infrastructure maintenance as budgeted or committed through these grants?
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question for me?
Do you intend to audit completion of infrastructure maintenance as budgeted or committed through these infrastructure grants?
I don't know. Absolutely.
So the work that we're doing on the infrastructure side is just a study at this point. There's no money allocated to the schools.
Right. So, but the assumption is you'll then take that information to the legislature, they will allocate dollars accordingly.
Right.
So the definitions of the things I'm asking, the copy of what it looks like to audit a school and assess their maintenance of infrastructure is the ground floor. So my thought process is, beyond that, will you intend to audit completion of projects associated with the information that you find?
That would be something that we're not engaged to be involved in at this point, and I would imagine that would be part of the legislation that allocates funding for that.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly?
I'm really excited about this. A lot of our schools have really been struggling in low-income and urban areas as well as the rural areas when it comes to infrastructure. And not having the funds from, you know, holes in the ceiling and rainwater coming in, to holes in the floor, to HVAC problems, there have been a lot of issues that I've witnessed as well as I've visited schools. So I'm looking forward to hearing about, hearing the report, what the results are. And I concur with Nikki, we need to have more information come back to the table. So definitely would love to see a thorough report since you guys are taking this on to know exactly what the needs are at this school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pew.
I am tickled about having this subject and just really just seeing you all working so closely together. I know that at least some of you all know how long this has been in the making. I would say that it predated the Flint Water Crisis, definitely predated the pandemic. But of course, both of those have sped up this collaborative effort. And I just, I really want to, you know, just raise up this board, as you all know that I often do, around these issues and make sure that you all are aware of the role that we've played in making sure that this happened. In 2015 through 2017, we were making statements as well as passing a resolution that called for us addressing the water and plumbing issues, more than just the one and done testing, but also making sure that we were filtering and also making sure that we were flushing and providing the resources necessary for schools to be able to continue that maintenance. We had people who came to our board table, like Elan Bintazo. We had a Healthy Schools Network held a press conference calling for Michigan Department of Education working very closely with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Eagle, and making sure that we were taking a well-rounded and approach to addressing the environmental and health needs of children. We had Ash Ray to come to the table, making sure that they were not left out, that the engineers and the expertise there was not left out. Pushing for regulation, sitting on, I remember Michelle Fecta and I, again, this predates both of those environmental crises. We were sitting on the school citing workshop, looking at where schools are cited and how schools are cited and how we can make sure that the ambient air doesn't impact the indoor air quality. So just want to make sure we give kudos to this board and think through that history, are mindful of that history. I was very happy to hear, and you answered a lot of my questions, that there is air quality monitoring that is picking up because we do hear that a lot. And of course, when I'm in Saginaw and forest fires in Canada are coming my way, and we're thinking about children. And the ventilation systems that we know in many of the schools have not been fully addressed yet, just wanting to make sure. I would love to hear more about where that air quality and monitoring is taking place because there were areas that long needed that monitoring, and we've long seen scarce monitoring. But now we know we need to make sure that we're spreading that. Really happy to hear that the lead testing is ongoing. We're talking about filtering, we're talking about flushing, and we're talking about maintenance support because all those things have to go hand in hand for this to work together. The indoor air quality, would love to hear how we're thinking about addressing to hear how we're thinking about addressing the limited funds. And then, when we talk about the filtration, the air filtering systems, I think that this goes, or dovetails into Board Member Snyder and Tilly's question. Do we think that those are long-term fixes? And we're looking forward to hearing how long-term fixes are going into place, along with the filtration systems that are being provided, because we know that that's not always a long-term fix. And we know back in the day, when we were thinking about weatherization, we were talking about shutting off windows. But we know that that doesn't always work for other health purposes, including safety. And I know that we're thinking these things through now, that everybody's coming to the table together. Really happy to hear, I think I heard, Dr. Langkell, that you said the HRA program saw improvements in asthma. Were we able to look at health data?
So we do not have an evaluative study of asthma rates.
Okay, okay.
We don't have that.
All right. Then I jumped the gun on that. I was hoping that that would support additional funding. I'll go back and I'll look at that. And then, it sounds like we are also addressing climate action as well, that we're starting to think of these, think of the work that we're doing here, and how that moves us and thrusts us into addressing climate action. And then that brings about a question with the new dollars through the Inflation Reduction Act, the Community Change Grants. Do you see those being inclusive of this work, being an opportunity for us to help communities to be inclusive of school environments and support this work?
So I can say that a number of climate and energy things through IRA are flowing through Eagle. I'm not familiar personally with the Community Change Grants, but happy to look into it.
And they're new, so I'm not sure. But it just seems like if we're thinking comprehensively, maybe we can help that to happen, because obviously that doesn't always work on the local levels. But I think especially if we're looking at these Justice 40 communities, that that's an opportunity for us to pick up where we're going to lose dollars, and again, be thinking comprehensively. So, but thank you, and thank you for, and I too hope that you all will come again and give us another update.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Presenters, just a few thoughts. One, really appreciate the cross-agency collaboration today. We do a lot of cross-agency collaboration throughout state government. Sometimes people are aware of it, sometimes they aren't. But daily, we're interacting with one another in one way, shape, or form. And it's to the credit of the institutions, to you, and to the work that we do, that we do that, that cross-agency collaboration. Forty years ago, Dr. Pugh, when I began my career, there were U.S. General Accounting Office studies about deferred maintenance on buildings, forty years ago. And the value of that deferred maintenance, that is to say, the extent of the cost associated with that deferred maintenance, has only grown in the last four decades. That's not to our credit as a nation, but that's true nonetheless. And we've got to address that at some point. You mentioned shuttered or nailed-shut windows. Back in the day, that was considered a best practice. You reflect upon that now. And in whose small mind was that a best practice? We had HV systems, not HVAC systems. We had few returns of air. So we didn't have an enormous amount of airflow. We didn't have cool air. We had oftentimes children penned up into schools without being able to open up windows. We had very old buildings, oftentimes, not always, but oftentimes built in part with asbestos. Now, asbestos non-friable is not an issue. Asbestos friable is a major concern. And we continue to have challenges around friable asbestos in schools. The work that this group and their colleagues in their agencies, including MDE, but Eagle and MDHHS, and not to forget, the School Finance Research Foundation, is integral, because we are going from very little in this area to an enormous amount, as you well know, as you well know. So I just want to point out one other historical piece, because some of us are old, and some of us are blessed with youth. Eight years ago, we began work in the School Finance Research Collaborative. Ten years ago, you recommended a study to the state legislature, the first school finance study. And then, we tried to springboard off of that to a School Finance Research Collaborative Study. There were three gaps in that study at the time. The one gap was high concentrations of poverty. That was perceived to be a gap. There were those of us who felt strongly about it. But there wasn't the requisite time to do it justice in that study. The second was general education transportation funding. And then the third was infrastructure. And this is a matter of equity. There are school communities across the state, rural, suburban, urban, as you point out, Ms. Tilly. As you point out, Dr. Pugh, as you well know from your experience, they cannot afford a capital millage or sinking fund. And so when they have an issue, a capital issue, a roof that fails, a boiler that fails, an entire HV system or HVAC system that fails, they've either got to go into their operating budget, if they are capable, and as a result, have it adversely affect Ms. Jackson, their classrooms, or if they can't afford it, they have to simply soldier on and address the failed roof, or the failed flooring, or, and a number of us have worked in schools like that. The last school in which I taught in Washington, D.C., when it rained, I sloshed through the hallway to get to my class. That was forty years ago. I just reflect upon that. And the work that we're doing in the state is really outstanding work. But we're making up for lost decades. We can't build a better past. We can only build a better future. We're building a better future with the work that we're doing now. We're making up for an awful lot of deferred maintenance, an awful lot of dragging of our heels. And the work that you did in Flint over a period of years with lead, that others have done across the state and across the country, it's been challenged by older facilities without the requisite resources to address these. We're beginning to lean in with resources, and with resources, we're building better environments for our students and staff. Board, it's 12:04, and I want to thank our presenters very much. I beg your pardon.
Ms. Lipton.
I had some questions.
Okay. So Mr. Busco, let the record show, you are not the only thing between us and lunch. Ms. Lipton?
I just have a quick question. On slide number four, where you talk about the 12A of the State School Act, 50 million for competitive grants. I think that's great. I'm certainly glad that the legislature appropriated that. Do we have any idea of like what percentage of the overall need that might reflect that $50 million? Is that like 10% of the overall need? Just back of the napkin, thoughts on that?
I don't. I know the partners I've been working with from Eagle, they had done us a study of all the buildings throughout the state of Michigan, and what the real cost would be to do all the improvements. It's mind-boggling. I don't remember the value. So this would be a very, from my guesstimate, it would be a very small percentage.
So it's a start.
Yes.
But we got a long way to go. You know, it's a good start, but...
That will also be addressed in the infrastructure study. That number will come out.
Yep. Okay. Then I just wanted to know, so the, when you talk about who is the School Finance Research Foundation, and say the group is a 501(c)(3) made up of 12 intermediate school district leaders from the 10 Mesa regions. Is that, is that in fact the governance structure, or are there other members of the board?
So each region, which is depicted on this slide, has selected one of their ISD superintendents to be on the board, to represent them on the SFRF board.
Okay. So they have, so basically, the governance of this 501(c)(3) is, are these 12 board members?
ISD superintendents, yes.
Okay. Are there any other, any other board members?
No.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And then, I just wanted to know, so on slide 20 and 21, so the school district participation in Section 11Y, 96% is, that's amazing, I think, getting that many school districts. And then it drops down to 55% on the energy audit of Section 11(a). I was wondering, do you have any thoughts on the reason for the disparity? Was it the way that the programs were incentivized, or?
Can I guess? Districts have been through energy efficiency programs before that were commercially available, that they felt like they got the short end of the stick on. So they're very hesitant to move forward with it. But we are still pushing on this and doing education, because really, to participate in the study, they're not committing to anything, right? We just want to find the potential there. So we're still pushing on that. We extended actually participation deadlines on this one, so we could do another push in January, when all the schools are together, yeah.
Okay. So maybe just like a little hesitancy from just past programs that...
And also, funding. You know, they're nervous about funding to do the projects. And we were talking about, you know, there's federal dollars available to do that, but that they have to spend the money first, right? And they're only partially reimbursed, so.
Right. And then, just, I really loved the ending in terms of the Eagle resources to support healthy schools. I would just throw out there for slide 29, that we have a lot of students, particularly in our Promise Zone communities, that are going into HVAC. They're going to community college at record numbers to get their degree and certification in HVAC. And how cool would it be to partner with those very students to come back and do the analysis of their own school building, school district? So, thank you.
Just a note, just to add to something that Mr. Zekian said, I do think that there are school districts that may have felt burned by energy initiatives in the past. I think there are also school districts, business officials, school superintendents, who feel like they entered into good relationships with energy firms. I know I did.
Thank you.
And benefited from.
Yeah. Warren Woods would be another example that have done tremendous things with their energy bonds.
So in some cases, people may feel as if they've gotten it covered. They've been in that space, and they've gotten it covered.
Been there, done that.
They've been there, done that, right. I would encourage, you know, there's no cost to this. I would encourage and would be happy to, you know, co-sign a letter to this, in this regard. If I were a local superintendent, I'd be all in with this, notwithstanding the fact that I've been in energy initiatives over a period of years. I think there's a value to continuing to look at how you do and be more efficient. Look at how you do, be more efficient. And if there's more to be done on the energy side, that's all good. You may have done something 10 years ago, which was cutting edge back in the day. Well, it's not back in the day, it's today. Yeah, Dr. Pugh.
Dr. Rice, there is a question that I did have also that was related to slide 13. Is the, are the dollars in the assessment and addressing the items that may arise in the assessment, are those predicated on some of the districts consolidating? Is that a part of the consolidation discussion?
So, no. Since this is really involved, do you feel comfortable talking about the 475 million from fiscal year '23? Go ahead, please.
Yeah. So there's 11X, which is what Dr. Rice is referring to, that allocated some money for infrastructure improvement and consolidation. For them to get the infrastructure improvement dollars, they had to participate in the 11Y study. And in the consolidation dollars, in the 2023-24 State Aid Act, that was clarified that they do not need to participate in the study, the infrastructure study for the consolidation dollars.
It's an awkward lump. They were, the, so the governor recommended a billion dollars over six years in an infrastructure fund, in the fiscal year '23 exact budget recommendation. And what came out of the negotiations with the legislature was not a billion dollars, but was rather a $475 million fund, which was split between infrastructure and consolidation. So it was, it was the product of a political negotiation. And they're odd bedfellows, quite frankly. And so they've tried to, if there's more to this, if you want to share additionally. So what the legislature in fiscal year '24 attempted to do was to clarify that this piece and this piece really had different rules, and they weren't related to one another.
Yeah, that has to be clear. I remember when we, when the lead dollars were first rolled out for assessment and testing, is that, you know, the thought of, okay, now what? You know, we've identified the issue, now what? It could be a bigger headache. So I think that there definitely has to be clarification there. And I do just, you know, I just want to say, I remember, and I probably raised this before, Dr. Langkell, I remember us traveling maybe to Wisconsin, I think it was Madison, and we were still arguing the issues of asthma, and how asthma can be induced by things other, outside of the control of a family, whether it was lead, asthma. It was often that it was a parent's fault, or there was a burden that they felt, because it was either a home that they weren't keeping up, or dusting, or, you know, genetic genes that they had passed down. So again, this has been a long time coming, where we're all able to have these discussions together. I remember being a part of the Environmental Advisory Council for the DEQ, back when it was the DEQ, and having these conversations. So coming at this from all angles, trying to make sure that everyone is coming together to pull together, to help families to solve these issues that improve the health, as well as the academic outcomes of our children. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Board, it is 12:13. Presenters, thank you so much. Have a great, great day and a great holiday season. We appreciate you. Board, it's 12:13. Form of the board is present. There is an update from legal counsel regarding pending litigation. I'll entertain a motion to convene the closed session, followed by a roll call vote. May I please have a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Bullock moves. And could I have a second, please? Ms. Lipton, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
I would like to ask you to state for the record what parties are to the lawsuit in regards to the legal, or the litigation that's pending.
That will be the topic of conversation in closed session.
I'm assuming it's public information, the parties to this lawsuit?
It is. And if you care to share, if you care to share that this afternoon, that's your...
I'm asking you as a state superintendent.
And what I'm saying is, we're going into closed session to receive advice from legal counsel. If you choose to come out of closed session and to share, that's your business.
As it is yours to choose not to divulge those who are a party to the litigation.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Very much appreciated. Board, it's 12:15. If you would find your way to the restroom, and then find your way to food and the conference room back here. Thank